Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:07 PM. As a reminder, public comment can be submitted through the superintendent@STGRSD.org. And will be read aloud during the public comment sections. Please make sure that the emails include your name and address. And we'll ensure that we read them as long as they're compliant with our public comment policies. Okay, in our packets, you should have had a secretary's report dated 5/5/2020. I'll entertain a motion to accept those meetings minutes.
So moved?
I'll second it.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the secretary's report? Okay, seeing none. Somebody have a comment? All right, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Start with Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan? He's muted, Jonathan? Am I the only one not hearing Jonathan?
I cannot hear him.
I can't hear him.
Might be having some technical difficulties. How about Maria?
Yes.
John, we can't hear you still.
You can't? Nothing?
There we go.
I don't know what, I mean, it's been unmuted, I don't know what the, I vote yes, by the way.
Thank you. All right, that passes 6-0-0. Okay, Amy earlier today sent the warrant articles out through our district emails. Please review them and sign them and electronically return them. Correspondents?
Yeah, I just need Amy to pull it up. So we received a notification from LPVAC that they are under budget constraints as we are, and they're looking to reevaluate their agreements with their union. It doesn't really affect us right now because we are not part of their transportation, and that's really what they're looking at. They're getting some pressure from some other of the LPVAC districts about potentially furloughing their bus drivers. So this was a communication sent to all of you to read. If you have any questions, I can take it back, we have a meeting with LPVAC on Tuesday morning. I also want to let you know that I received an email today that they have moved Roland Joyle forward pending successful negotiations as the new director of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. And I want to thank all the work that the LPVAC Board of Directors and Governors did and the Search Committee. I know it's not easy during this time, but they were successfully able to hold interviews and bring forward a name.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, moving on. All right, at this time, it's time for our first public comment. Amy, if you would, check the email account.
Chairman Hul, I have no emails for public comment.
Give it one more minute and then I'll run. Amy, one last check, anything in there?
No, there's no emails for public comment.
Okay, moving on. Okay, student advisory report.
Good evening, everyone. It is May, so we have finally finished up our AP testing, to the best of my knowledge. During our AP testing time, our administrators were absolutely incredible and personally came to students' houses and dropped off the sweetest, most personalized notes along with some candy and these really awesome, you know, cups that say South Lake Rams on them. And it was really just the sweetest thing, I brought a smile to my face. It made me feel way better going into my testing that day. And it was just absolutely incredible, especially from a student perspective, to just know that our admin are doing absolutely everything for us, and it was absolutely incredible. So, so much appreciation for that. Today was the esports championship for our team, who made it into the championship, which was absolutely incredible. I don't know if anyone tuned in at 3 o'clock to watch, but I'm just so proud of them. It is absolutely awesome in this circumstance to see people being able to continue their sports. I know we talked earlier in the year about technology and playing sports virtually versus doing it in the more traditional setting, but this is a great way to see our camaraderie and just overall school spirit continue on. This Friday will be the virtual talent show, which is a little different than we usually would be doing it, but still just a great way to continue on the tradition. I've gone every single year since my freshman year in high school, and it is always such a great event to watch. We have so many talented individuals in our school, so I highly recommend tuning into this on this Friday. For the upcoming weeks for seniors, we will see the sign out occurring on May 29th. We talked about this last meeting, but I have a couple more details now. We will be handing out caps and gowns during that time. We will be retrieving items from students such as textbooks and other materials that were lent out before the COVID crisis. And we will be handing the final stage of the Emerald Shield voting process to seniors as they come in to receive caps and gowns and other such items. That date, we will also be holding a senior drive around, which will be escorted by the police. We have put out a route for the public to see, and it goes around most of South Lake except for the main road, which we did on purpose just for the safety purposes, but it will also be traveling up to Granville during that time. And that is all I have for tonight, if there are any questions.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Okay, we have some educational presentations this evening relative to the student handbook changes. And we will start with Woodland Elementary first.
Hello, everyone. So for our updates, they were minimal. We edited dates, updated page numbers. We have addition of policies to the handbook that were noted in the, I don't know, the glossary, whatever you want to call it. We have the updated district calendar, updated directory. And the biggest thing was on page seven, removing the statement that when a student is tardy five times or more in a marking period, that they'll serve a lunch detention. We don't have the kids serve lunch detentions. This isn't at our level a kid issue. And then page 15, the PTO meetings are not, are no longer being held monthly. They've been being held every other month, so we'll have that change as well. And then at the end of the booklet was the added or new updated policies. So our policies are consistent across all three handbooks. So some of them were outdated that were in our handbook, so some of that's updated, and some were a new additions that we didn't have in our handbook to meet with some of the requirements when we go through audits and such. And that's basically all I have.
Does anybody have any questions for Principal Sasso?
It's been a hot topic, but I noticed that there was a nice little diagram of the drop off procedure. Was that a new diagram, or was it always that you should drop them off and just keep driving kind of thing?
At the rec center?
Yeah.
We've always had that in there.
Okay, I just thought it seemed different from what was actually with people parking and then walking their students.
Well, at the younger, with the young kids, a lot of parents feel more comfortable actually walking their kiddo down the sidewalk. So, yeah, we've always had the diagram, but most people park and walk their kids to the front door and then go back.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Principal Sasso.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to Powder Mill.
Right, so Powder Mill has a pretty extensive set of changes that we recommended, and it's important for you to know that the result of a cohort of teachers that began meeting in late November, the group was chaired by sixth grade team leader Heather Lloyd. She had a team that had representatives from all of the grades and the specials. They worked with their respective grades and groups to solicit feedback, draft changes, and get feedback on those changes. So there is a cover sheet that outlines all of the changes that we made. The two biggest sections being the academic, and it's split into academic grades and homework guidelines. Those were both new added additions, but they come from some information that was in the student handbook going back to 2014. And it was called To Keep What We Felt Was Important and Not What We Felt Like Was Outdated. I don't know if you have any questions, but I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Principal Carrier? All right, thank you very much. Move on to the regional school.
Good evening. Our schedule, our changes this year are minimal. Principal Sasso touched on a lot of the logistical changes, name changes, calendar changes that we'll make to our handbook this year, but we have no changes to any policies or procedures at SRS this year.
Any questions for Principal Chumel? All right, thank you all. Moving on.
Your action items?
Amy?
It's policies, can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
So we have our second reading of EFDA, which is the unpaid meal charge policy. Does anybody have any questions on that policy? Okay, tonight will be our third and final reading of JLCEC, which is the AED policy. Anybody have any questions on that policy? All right, moving on.
How, uh, first one is to move to waive the three readings of the policy EFDA, unpaid meal charge policy recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Ted can have it.
I'm sorry.
I showed up in time to do my job.
All right. I didn't notice.
All right, so we're, just to clarify for everybody, we're going to waive the third reading for the unpaid meal charge policy. And we're going to, our next section item is going to be to approve that. So just so everybody's aware procedurally what we're doing here. So any questions on this? This is just to waive the third reading of EFDA unpaid meal charge policy. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, so that motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to accept the policy EFDA, unpaid meal charge policy recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this policy? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote for action item B. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to rescind the policy EBB-1, School-Based Public Access Defibrillation Program Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? So procedurally, we're just voting on this to remove the old policy before we approve the new one. And we'll do a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to accept the policy JLCEC, Automated External Defibrillator Policy Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
So any questions, any final questions on the AED policy? Okay, we'll move to the roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, so the motion passes 7-0-0.
Amy, you might want to pull this one up for people to see. You can move to approve the 2019-2020 District Calendar Revision 1.5 Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
So we just formally took graduation off as of June 6th, and we put TBD.
Okay, and that's this year's calendar, correct?
Yes.
And that's the only change here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, and the motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to accept the agreement between the Southwick-Talling-Granville Regional School Committee and the Southwick-Talling-Granville Education Association, Incorporated, for the period of August 25th, 2019 through August 24th, 2022, recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Along with the warrant articles, Amy also sent us the signature page for this, so please make sure you sign that to authorize the contract as well. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to approve this agreement. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, the motion passes 7-0-0. Okay, moving on to reports, Superintendent is first.
Hi, so I want to thank the paper screening committee. We were able to move forward with our special education director interviews. Six candidates were brought forward. Two have backed out for interviews, so we have four candidates left to interview. We'd like to start them, I have three potential dates. We'd like to do one hour each, beginning at 4 o'clock, if that's okay. We could also move it to 5 o'clock if the school committee cannot do four, but we'd like to choose two of those three proposed dates to hold the interviews.
And this is something where all committee members will be present, correct?
No, we have, I think, believe we have two members on this interviewing committee. We had two members do the screening, and we have two members doing the interviews.
Okay, so the whole committee is not involved in the process at all, am I correct?
You're correct.
Maria and I were involved in the paper part.
And so who is involved in the interview part?
I think I raised my hand.
I believe I'm on there as well.
Is that who we had written down, or?
I believe so.
I think I was involved somehow, but that's, that's fine.
I know Chairman Hul was on it, and I believe Chelsea, you were on it as well. I don't know if you were on it or not, Ted.
No, 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 that's fine.
Okay. So before we reach out to the candidates and to the other members of the interviewing committee, we wanted to give the school committee the opportunity to let us know what days work best for you, which two of those three days work best. And if they don't, we can go back and get some additional dates.
I'm not good on the 26th, but I can do the 27th and the 3rd.
Okay, Chelsea, can you do that as well?
I think all of them work for me.
Okay.
Should be good.
Are you, are you able to start at 4 o'clock?
Oh, yeah.
Chairman Hul?
4 o'clock's fine.
Okay, so we will propose, I will give it to Ms. Larkham tomorrow to meet up with the other people on the interviewing committee for May 27th, June 3rd. We'll do one at 4 o'clock, and we'll do one at 5:15 for the interviews.
Great, and we'll get the paper copies?
Yes, we'll get copies of everything to you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
We're doing this remotely, correct?
Yes, via Zoom, yes.
Okay.
No social distancing has not opened up that much yet, so we will be doing it via Zoom. So we will be sending out Zoom invitations for each candidate.
Just double checking.
Yes.
Can we also have a pre-meeting before we start with the candidates?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Amy, Larkham will be getting in touch with the entire committee and setting everything up so we can give her any feedback we have of what, how you'd like her to set up the interviews. I'm actually not part of the interviews, I am just, I just observe. I am not, I don't ask the questions, or I'm not a voting member of this next round. I do want to let you know that we were able to work out with our building and ground supervisor plan so that teachers had access to the schools this week. They were very thankful for it, they've been asking us for a few weeks how to get in. While they were in, they've been packing up some student materials, and we will have a student pickup later on in June. Our plan was to reopen central office starting next week, I believe on Tuesday, on a very staggered schedule. We have to have a COVID plan in place, per the governor, currently working with Eric Wykander on that. It's got a two-page document, and it has hygiene, social distancing. And of course, not everybody has been going into the office, so there are some questions. So I can tell you that myself and Amy will be in the office on Tuesday, and we hope to have the plan out to everybody later in the day on Tuesday. So we still do plan on opening central office, Monday through Friday, 9 to 1, and schools have a plan in place from 9 to 1 on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The most important thing is, yes, we are open, but we're only doing it, anything by appointment only, that we can, for the safety of the people coming into the school and for the safety of our employees. So if you do need a work permit, or you do need to reach for the schools or to come into the central office, we just ask that you call ahead so that we have proper social distancing and safety precautions. And I will be, I just said about 3 o'clock today, I did receive guidance from the commissioner. I'm not ready to talk about it quite yet, I haven't even had an opportunity to talk to the building principal yet, but we did receive some guidance on graduation. So seniors and senior parents and other members of the community, you should be receiving an update about graduation in the next few days. And that is what I have today.
Any questions for Superintendent Waller?
Thank you for sending out that email to everyone about what's happening with getting in the school, getting stuff. I think that probably prevented a whole lot of questions over the next month.
We're trying to streamline information, but information changes by the day. So we will keep doing our best to give you the most current information that we have.
And kudos to the principals for doing the same. I know, Kim, you're doing a great job trying to streamline the communications as well, it's really helpful.
Thank you, Jess.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I did have one more thing to add. I just want to let the school committee know that we did, our principals had phone calls with staff members last week, and letters were sent out this week to all of our members of our school district. We either had to non-renew or do a reduction in force. So they were notified, there still are a few changes that need to be made. An additional letter or two that we will be sending out shortly. But letters, I want to let you know that letters did go out, and all staff were notified personally by the building principal or central office.
Okay, moving on to the Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a couple brief remarks to the committee. Finance Subcommittee met earlier today. I think Mrs. Baldigo will report out on some of that. The, we continue to see a lot of uncertainty around the fiscal and educational outlook for FY21. You know, what will the state budget look like, what will actual school look like? Just over the last 48 hours, we've received additional information and guidance that suggests that the cuts to funding from, from the state may be more dramatic than was thought. You know, over the last several months as we've been, been dealing with this, this public health crisis. Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation released an update on state tax revenue projections for FY21. They've increased the impact to state tax revenues by nearly $2 million to, to a total of projecting $6 billion off from, from where they had originally thought it was going to be, per the governor's budget that was released back in January. So with those things in mind, I just want to inform the committee that we continue to explore additional contingency plans in the event that we do see a dramatic reduction to state funding in FY21 beyond some of the things that we've already prepared for. Hopeful that it won't come to that, we're hoping that we actually emerge out of June with an approved budget at the, at the local level. with an approved budget at the, at the local level, as all three towns have annual town meetings scheduled in June. So we're cautiously optimistic about that. But in the event that the state funding, which does make up a very significant portion of our overall annual operating budget funding, if there are some significant impacts to that as the state budget picture gets clarified, well, probably over the summer months, that we are working on the necessary contingencies to deal with that. And, and we've been providing you with more information along the way. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that at the next school committee meeting, we'll be coming to you with recommendations regard, with a recommendation regarding school lunch and breakfast pricing. We do need to look at that really on an annual basis, but typically every couple, two to three years, we have to adjust to take into account the paid lunch equity guideline that the USDA has around school lunch. So we are fine tuning some of the options that, that we're looking at. It may be that we are just dealing with the breakfast pricing for the upcoming school year, but we'll, we'll come to you with a recommendation of the next school committee meeting. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Presnel? Okay, we'll move on to the next section. All right, Subcommittee and Liaison Updates. We haven't had any negotiations. Finance, it just wants to give an update about today's meeting.
Yeah, I mean, Steve gave the high level of most of it, that we did discuss the breakfast charges at the meeting. Gave Steve direction there that they are probably pretty low and that they could probably use an update since they, we don't know the last time they've been changed. And then with regards to the other financial items, the issue is uncertainty. And when I say uncertainty, uncertainty with pretty much everything. So how do you budget for an upcoming year where the state doesn't have a budget? The town doesn't then have a budget and we don't even know what school is going to look like and what resources we need. So trying to account for a lot of different things through these meetings. We're meeting again next week just to make sure we're not missing everything. As Jen said, the situation is very fluid. There's no information daily, weekly at the moment. So we're trying to do the best we can not to impact the students and education, but realize the reality of the financial situation that all of us being at home has created with revenues.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to LPV E C Board of Governors.
So yes, we actually had a very lengthy meeting yesterday because it was our final interviews for the executive director position. So a, a smaller Subcommittee had done the first round of interviews and then brought the three finalists to the, the full board. And we interviewed those three last night in a public meeting. And we did make a selection and we offered the position to Roland Joyle, who some of you may know, he is currently the Assistant Superintendent in Chickpee, but has had a very long career in education here in the valley. So he's, he's pretty well-known by a lot of people in education. And he did accept the position and it's just now pending contract negotiations, which hopefully will happen within the next couple of weeks. We have a regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday of next week. And that's it.
Thank you, Pam. LPV E C Board of Directors has not met. Policy Subcommittee.
Yeah, I have, we, Jenny came in and talks about the, the bullying policy. I think we, there was maybe some minor tweaks to that, but I believe that's getting sent to legal to, to work that out. Jenny, I think you're, well, she's in the attendee schedule move, but I think everything is, I think just about set there. And then we reviewed a wellness policy. And then obviously like what we did getting the vote moved up for the, the lunch meal charge stuff. I don't, I don't know if Maria or Chelsea have anything else. I'm just looking at my notes here. It's pretty much it from what I see. I think we're meeting next Tuesday again.
Okay, thank you for the update. Buildings and grounds, Steve and Eric and I had a call, I believe it was last week. We discussed the reductions in capital and what projects they would be focusing on next fiscal year. We discussed COVID cleaning. And we discussed the returning the workforce to work or opening the schools. Steve, do I have something?
I, I think that was the, the essential components of the meeting. I think you got it.
Transportation?
We have it.
Okay. ILT, I think you guys have a scheduled meeting for June, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't have anything on my calendar, but I was confused by the email that went out regarding that meeting. So maybe Jenny Sullivan, if you could just clarify for me if and when ILT is meeting at some point in time, that'd be great.
Okay, is there any other Subcommittee or Liaison that would like to add something at this point?
Ooh, the 250th had a meeting last night on Zoom and we discussed or voted on postponing everything till next, or 2021 and potentially redoing first night, but kind of just moving everything where it was supposed to be for this year. So if it was something in June, 2021 of June. So we'll be talking about it some more.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next section. This time, it's time for our second public comment. I'm going to ask Amy to check the email account.
Chairman Hul, I've checked the email account and I have no emails for public comment.
I have one. Sailfish just went by, so our lake is open.
Okay, moving on to our next section, please. Okay, old business. Okay, the Superintendent Evaluation, we have all the feedback from the committee members. Thank you very much. We'll compile it and we will do a report out at our next June meeting. And we didn't have any requests for any other business for this meeting this evening. Unless anybody else has anything else to add. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss budget-related topics.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. So we need to exit out of this meeting and then go into the other meeting. Thank you all for attending this evening. Have a good night.